Forgive so our sins, Lord, as we forgive those who sin against us. Wished all these things in them.
Into the public. God, and Jesus, with every change that's ever been. Honored to stand this way, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
What's going on? We're gonna start putting those up there. Okay, just a reminder, at the end of this meeting, we're going to recess to Texas State Emagolize Extension Service for the Formular Commission, Commission for the Culturation. This time, any persons with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court, no formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Okay. Presentation and discussion of Department of Committee and Board reports.
It is, yes. If you have something to do with the law. It looks in three minutes. Difficult to understand.
Yeah.
Forces, adults, count, sidewalks, boxes are hurting more. Many holes.
I'll get him below me, come in and see if he can play that.
Yeah.
Any discussion on any of these? Court to discuss and consider any present project schedule or stepping. We're on vacation.
Where's our board? It's the best that came out. I'm running, but nobody can do it. They've been, we're just mowing your out.
Yeah.
It's too much. But they're doing the best that they can, probably.
Get a ring.
I think it will previous the speaker.
All right, Court to consider accepting donations to county entities, there are several. I think there were three to the golf course for irrigation, and the total amount is seven hundred and seventeen hundred and fifty for those. Library, thirty-nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-two cents, that's receipts from the book sale and a donation. And then we have the donation of the sleigh for three thousand dollars. I'll show you that, that looks nice. Senior Center, twenty-one hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents total. And that's all of the donations? Thank you. All in there? All right, Court to hold a public hearing on post-tax, but you're hearing with the Razzas Wind Ventures LLC. Brandon couldn't make it today. Call it ten oh five. There was a surgery with someone, so gave it, not able to make it. This abatement would be for ten years. Would be one thousand eighty-one dollars first, years one through five, year six through ten, eleven hundred and two dollars, and that's been adjusted. Correct. Any discussions? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Court to discuss and consider tax abatement agreement with Razzas Wind Ventures LLC for the project described as property owners are Halligan Land Corporation, L O P, S B M Ranch, L O C, James Dean Armadine Blankenship, application is Razzas Wind, name and location, green investments are Scurry Boarding County Line Reinvestment Fund One, located in the northwest corner of Scurry County, Scurry Guards of County Lines, construction of a wind tire electric generation facility with an estimated ninety-six megawatts. Estimated cost of the improvements is seventy-nine million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Judge, I make a motion that we hear the tax abatement agreement with Razzas Wind Ventures LLC here.
All right. All right, Court to discuss and consider road use agreement with Bad Razzas Wind Ventures, we don't have that yet, I asked him about it this morning, he's not checked, let me see if he sent that. We've dealt with them before, though, they usually have that pretty well in mind. So, we do, for these pleasures today, I don't have anything from them yet, the road use agreement, don't know which roads they have.
I would like to see it.
Okay.
I don't want to bring it out in order.
Absolutely.
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Court to discuss and consider amendments to tax abatement agreement with Case E T X thirteen L O C and Laura Ronan. Did I say that wrong?
Yes.
Okay.
Howdy, howdy, Laura.
Thank you for coming. What's going on is they have had supply chain issues and haven't been able to get the dress, they're gonna start January. I'll let Laura take over from me.
Sure. So, howdy, my name's Laura Ronan, with Key Kennedy, I'm the project developer on our battery storage project out in Dermot, off of County Eighty-four and Twenty-one Oh Five, uh, sorry, Twenty, yeah, out there in Dermot. I was just out there with the landowner this morning, nice area, very cold, it used to when I left yesterday, it was seventy, I got here, it was twenty-nine, it was very different. So, I appreciate the actual winter weather, but yeah, all we're asking for here with our road use agreement, we're looking to mobilize our project starting first week of January, and initially we had made the road use agreement effective January first, twenty twenty-two, due to extending circumstances, mostly delayed, due to delayed supply chain issues with our batteries, our construction day had to be pushed back six months, and construction won't start till the beginning of the year, so we're just asking to see if we can get that date amended into January, to start January first, twenty twenty-three.
Supply chain issues is an issue for everyone.
Absolutely. We had a meeting with them, and they have a great plan going forward as far as safety and meetings with emergency management and all, so we're very minimal to making any changes that can be made. Fire break all the way around was the big one.
I would say we ran through the exclusion, because they all learned the drill, because they were sitting off in California, what?
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate you coming down. And if you stay much longer, next couple of days, it's gonna be around eighty.
Just hang around a little while.
All right, Court to discuss and consider a resolution on a public hearing regarding the availability of Community Development Block Care Act, C D B G dash C V, funds for the Community Resiliency Program. Shannon McMillan is here today, she's the one who brought this information to us, she's with Centriant Planning. I'm gonna give you just kind of an idea of what we're talking about, and then I'm gonna let Shannon take over. So, what we're looking at is that there is this community block granted, it's federal funds coming through the state, and we're looking at using it for, uh, for a health department. Build over on the property at the, on the east side of the Law Enforcement Center. This grant is thirty-six or thirty-eight million for the state, up to five million dollars per project. There's no percent cost share associated with this grant, so it's one hundred percent. And I'll let Shannon take over.
I'm just here to answer any questions that you have regarding it, like Fred said, I work for Centriant Planning and Devine in San Angelo, we want this for this community, I'm actually from Snyder originally, grew up here, and my mother actually used to work at the health department, my dad used to get a shot at the current health department, and it's something very dear to my heart, and I felt like whenever I'm going through these grant processes, that Snyder was the perfect fit for that grant, and just wanted to go along with that process.
And so, when we, uh, we've been having our meetings and kind of discussing, one of the big needs was a new health department, and I've got a, over here that Dana has put together, and we've had some other issues come up since she's gave me this, foundation issues, plumbing issues, can't get the plumbing issues fixed, because it's, I'll let you describe that.
Well, we did, we started out with trying to see what kind of foundation issues we had, just to go from there, because most of our doors will not even close anymore, the building has settled so much, so we had someone come in and actually do the study on our foundation, as you figure, there's probably at least there, this eight thousand dollars that he knows of, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. He could not give me any more numbers or anything else until we checked to make sure that there was not a continuous leak under the building, to see if that was what was causing the settling. So, he suggested a hyperstatic water test, so we could check to see what our plumbing was doing underneath the building, so we called them to come out and do the test, they could not even run a camera through to even begin the test, not, much less do the hyperstatic test, because there are so many bins and so many plugs and everything in our plumbing underneath the building, that there's not even a way to even look to see what is going on under there, to see if we have a water leak, to see if it's causing foundation issues. And so, that's basically, as I said, you know, we've gotten up to twelve thousand dollars and don't even know what we're even looking at right now, to be honest with you. The building, the, the hot water right now, through, some of it's plumbed under the building, some of it goes up through the ceiling of the building, our hot water, whatever's coming through right now is basically chocolate milk. On Mondays, we have to run it, we run our water, everything for at least fifteen minutes on Mondays, just so we can go ahead and clear the lines, because actually, we are the health department, and we have basically gotten to the point where we close other businesses down for the shape that our building is in currently, and we've done everything we can, we keep putting lipstick on that pig, and that old girl is just, she's literally on her last leg. So, it's to the point, it's going to take a huge, a major remodel, or we're going to have to look at doing something else. And with that being said, what I would like to also address the court, um, the, the area that we are in currently, the crime rate has just gone through the roof. We had a shooting two doors down from the office the other day, and last week. Yes, during business hours, we had the shooting, and a couple of days ago, there was a guy walking back and forth in front of the health department with a backpack and a baseball bat over his shoulder. So, it, it's gotten to the point that there's, I'm concerned for my staff, for one thing, I mean, we're doing everything we can to stay safe, but it's got to the point where I don't, if I was a parent, I would have a really hard time bringing my children down to get their vaccines or get anything else, because that neighborhood has really gotten dangerous for us. And whenever I first started, we were in the perfect location, because our little families that we serve in that area, they lived in that area, they could walk to us, they didn't have to worry about transportation, they didn't have to worry about anything else. But it's gotten to the point that they are concerned, so they will not walk to the health department anymore, they will, they'll try to find rides, they'll do whatever they can so that, that they can stay safe and keep their hands safe. With the area that we're discussing, by the Law Enforcement Center, it is still, if you basically do like the survey, like Shannon has been looking at, Shannon has been awesome, I mean, she's helping, she's actually looking to see the area that we serve, the community that we serve in, and it's not gonna be that far, you know, but it's just going to get us into a safer area of town, where we'll be able to serve them without the concerns of all the criminal activity over there. So, there's just, there's a lot of different issues, and I would, I would appreciate, I would appreciate all of you coming down and walking through the building, I've, you know, I've got pictures of what's going on, I've got, but I, I would love you to come firsthand and come actually look at the facility and see what we're talking about, and I know some of you have been in there, some of you know it extremely well, so you know exactly what I'm talking about. But it's just to the point, if, if we could do this, if we could find something, grant money that would help us, that would be awesome, it really would, because I don't, I don't think it's feasible, and I don't think it's a smart use of money, whether it be taxpayer money, grant money, anything else to put into that building any longer.
When was that, Bill?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. The issue, another issue you're coming across is the restrooms?
The restrooms, we are not ADA compliant, and we have not ever been ADA compliant. Our, we have one employee restroom, and then we have another public restroom, and with the clientele that we are currently serving, we are seeing a lot of issues, issues of STDs, things like that, and I'm really not comfortable with, because we have to use that restroom for some of the testing, to collect samples, things like that, I am not comfortable, which we do everything we can, we sanitize, but I'm not comfortable using that same restroom that we're using for those little ones to come in and use. It's just, it's not wise, it's not, there again, we're the health department, we should be leading by example, and we're not right now.
And haven't been for some time.
We haven't been, we, we have done the best we can with what we have, we really have, we've, we've tried, we have tried to cut corners everywhere we can, we have tried to keep our budget as low as we can, and I take full responsibility for that, because I have let things literally disintegrate around my ears, that I should have fought harder for, and I just, I have not done that. So, with this opportunity, with Shannon, I, this is going to be a chance for me to rectify that situation the best I can, and try to get everything back up and going, because as you know, COVID is not going anywhere, we're, we're going to be dealing with it, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of other diseases and a lot of other issues that are going to come up, and we're just going to get busier. And with what we have going on at the border right now, and that is another thing that I will say, is that there are some buses that are literally being dropped off right there, basically at our doorstep, and we, if they come into our facility, we have to treat them, we have to take care of them, we don't turn anyone away, period, we just don't. There again, that's going to be another issue that, that we see coming, and that's not gonna get any better for a while either.
Legally, you cannot.
Legally, I cannot, and I receive emails every day, I do, I, if they walk in our door, and if they want to be treated, if they need something, we treat them, and it doesn't matter, you don't ask for identification, you cannot ask for an address, a phone number, you cannot ask for anything. But what we can do is, or will do, whenever they come in, if they even get like a flu shot, something like that, what we have to do legally, we have to enter them into our system. Once we enter them into that system, if they do give us an address, they give us a phone number, then we enter them into the, our system, into our state system, they get an official copy, whatever it was that, that they did, whether it was a flu shot, whatever it was, we give them that official copy, that gives them identification for them to use to go into our system.
Backdoor into the state.
And it is, it's basically right, and there's nothing we can do about that, our hands are tied, whenever that happens. So, they can use our shot records, whatever we give them, as their ID, a state form of ID.
I pass that on to our legislators at the House, so I don't think, and they were surprised that they were able to get that.
And a lot of times now, what they have figured out is they can do the COVID vaccine, and that's free, you know, even with the, the flu vaccine, things like that, we've always used private, private software available to charge, to at least get vaccine of our administration fees, to get something back, but now that they would have COVID vaccine, they know, they can come in and get COVID vaccine for free, go into our system.
Right.
Right.
Thank you, Dan. This definitely falls into COVID-related, which it has to have a COVID vibe, it's one of the eligible activities, in that it's a health plan.
serves the area.
Serves the area, yeah, and this is for small entities, small governments, cities with population of fifty thousand, or counties with populations of less than two hundred thousand, it would basically be a shovel-ready job, because we own the property, we have water, sewer, they're directly accessible, just few things that we're trying to put together to get grants, insurance, that they would like the grant.
And I would like to reiterate that the uniqueness with this grant is that you typically don't find grants that are gonna fund the building of an actual facility, and you sure as heck don't find them for a health fund.
Right.
This is a unique one, it's not, it is from the federal government, but not any ties to where you're gonna deal with vaccine mandates, or all these other things that are coming down with the American Rescue Plan funds, that kind of look a little iffy, this is actually gonna be managed from the state, not managed from the federal government, which, which kind of gives everybody a little bit of breath and fresh air, as far as once you get it, what are the strings attached to it? There's always strings attached to grant money, but not as much as federal grant money when the state is the one that's actually dispersing that funding.
That is, I don't know, probably is my concern, especially with.
Absolutely.
Is the line pop up in thirty years and say, eh, we want it back.
Yeah, so this is.
Washington, Scurry County, probably won't get that.
Yes, yeah. The American Rescue Plan funds for the infrastructure, those are actually managed by the federal government now, and they, you have to report to the U S Treasury, this is not that way, you would report to the Texas community and housing folks.
So, it won't be tied to, won't be a chance of the state two years from now saying, there's always a chance.
Yeah, there's a, there's a five-year reporting period, once construction is completed, but, you know, the way that goes, that as long as you do what they ask you to do, they're not gonna come in and try to take you back.
Second question is, so, I don't have a question, but my second question is, if I don't already build it.
What was that? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did a preliminary cost estimate whenever we first found this for, for Scurry County, and I think it's fully a viable, I mean, I think it's easily funded, basically, it, it, you know, we went from the Taj Mahal to the medium Taj Mahal to the bare necessities, so there's lots of different options, I think, you know, square footage was a big thing with, with Dana and what all they needed, but when you look at square footage of the old building versus square footage of the new building, you may get it even have the same footprint, but actually have a functional use space, whereas that's kind of taken up a lot, there's a lot of space taken up that necessarily didn't need to be.
A lot of the work that we have, you know, we've got to go with it.
Pulling holes in the glass.
Yeah, that's it. That was my two concerns, and we can, it's that we can beat, as sure as we can beat, that we can build it, throw it the grant money, and the state affects it, we'd love to do what the state or the federal government's gonna do.
I see that's on the ground of that.
Well, they, they are, the states have given federal money too, so.
Sure.
That scares me.
Yeah. Now, we have to have a public hearing on this, and that would be scheduled for the twenty-eighth, next Tuesday, if we decide to do this, and it will be posted in all the paper, that there will be that public hearing, and online public comment can be made to my email address, which will be posted on that, and we'll put this on the Facebook page and webpage as all, as well, if we vote to go forward and have the public hearing, that's what we're voting on today.
Judge, I make a motion that we hold a public hearing on the twenty-eighth, next Tuesday, for the block grant specified, and that's the public hearing, and that's the resolution.
All right, all right. Court to discuss and consider supplemental and final order, nothing devised, political batteries following redistricting, permission of court process. Thank you, Shannon. So, this is something else that's the final step, I hope, in redistricting. All right, it's the court's final step, it is not their final step. If you've been, if you've been to the court's office, you know that they are working very diligently and moving lines. Uh, the final order, you have read it?
Okay.
Okay.
Only it's just, I think we have to jump through, because we, you know, the public area, it's, it's like, it's, for a window, it's something more.
County authorities day to day.
Yes, yeah, so.
Forget our job, the world, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, she loves that.
I make a motion that we adopt this, but I don't know what we're. All right. Consider approval of traders' monthly report for November twenty-second. You wanna do, the traders' monthly report, the personnel report?
Okay.
And this is gonna be where we give the, the answer to the question on the reserves, and we'll go into, I'll explain it once we get there, or Kirsten will explain.
First, is there any questions on the monthly report?
Did a good job.
We had an increase of about two point nine million dollars from last month in October. Student newly collecting AdVor taxes collected in advance for October, which it was paid to us in November, we received about three point seven million dollars from AdVor. The check that we received for November, received in December, was about two point seven million. So far, we've collected six point five million dollars of our AdVor taxes, that's only about half, what, that's how much we have left? All that will be moved into a investment account, a tax code card account, and have a high interest rate. I will also be moving over EMS patient receipts in miscellaneous revenue, last chair, y'all approved, or anything over budget can be moved into his investment account, so I will be moving it back as we get closer to the end of November. Any questions on that?
Yes, the question that came up was, what is the county's reserves? And so, there's a breakdown. And so there's a breakdown of that. It's not all one reserve. And I think what they were asking specifically asking was general fund. And so it's difficult to answer because the general fund has money from all of the departments in one area, plus all of the payments that come in for early payables issues discussing. Really can't give a real definitive answer of how much money can go to reserves until after January 1st. So there are several individual, several, I say, how many individual funds are there? There are about 10 or 15 that are specific funds that they have to go to.
So our general fund works off the whole cash system. So as long as we're in the middle of a budget, it's very hard to answer how much is in the reserve because you have money coming in and coming out at the same time. There's also money in that whole cash system that can be only used for certain things. So I think that's what Dan's saying is that we can't answer that question right now.
One of those funds is courthouse security fund, can only be used for courthouse security.
Correct.
The county clerk's office has a special fund that can only be used for those things identified by the state. So there's several of those, so it is difficult to say what does the general fund have in reserve.
Mr.?
How many reserve funds are there?
You've got Roden Bridge, you've got, and I don't know that I have the actual list. Is it, is the list?
I mean, are you mixing reserve funds with investment funds? That's a question. So we have investment accounts that we move money into that we could be using that money within that budget that aren't necessarily reserve funds. They're just getting a higher interest rate.
Reserve funds specifically, I guess, because I noticed there's several listed on here in the following agenda items as reserve funds. There's EMS and there's airport.
So there's specifically, there's the emergency reserve fund.
Right.
EMS has a reserve fund, airport has a reserve fund, and those are specifically designated reserve funds. The emergency reserve fund, y'all designated that y'all would have to vote to even pull money out of that.
So when you're saying emergency, you're not saying EMS?
No. So. And that's the name of that fund, the general fund emergency.
Is that where the, we're going to try to put a million dollars in a year or whatever?
We put a million dollars in initially, and then.
So that's what the emergency reserve is, okay. So EMS, Roden Bridge, airport, and emergency, basically.
Roden Bridge technically doesn't have any reserve fund. They do have excess money, but they do not have any reserve fund that they're using.
It's reserved in that it cannot be put into general fund.
Correct.
That's the reserve of it. It can only be used for Roden Bridge.
So what's, could be the technical term for that fund if it's not a reserve?
It's just an investment account. And Roden Bridge, you're on the right.
State clerk also has reserve funds.
Those are within our.
They're being more now because the legislature has changed it to where some of those fines and fees and things can only be used for specific things. And so they change all the time, back and forth, depending on the legislature's will.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You enjoy.
Are those things kind of like a sinking fund? I know we used to, we had what we call sinking funds, that kind of what you're using the emergency funds for or the reserve funds?
There was.
Sinking funds usually have to mean you're using it for like the LA complex. We have a loan and we have a bond for that, and so there was a sinking fund for that. And there's no construction going on at this time.
Well, in what I've just seen where other counties use a sinking funds, like for different things, how like the health departments getting new building or new roofs or.
That's because they probably have a bond out there for that. And so they have to have by law a sinking fund for that.
A couple of bonders paid because I don't, schools will, they still have a sinking fund compared with bond.
So like all our law enforcement talking about?
Yes.
Where LA complexes, where it's two funds.
So you have to have that anytime there is a bond sold to fund a government. Construction. But that's the deal. As far as Roden Bridge, it's staying Roden Bridge. I think he's based in Lakeport, Roden Bridge. But to the general fund, as I said, so that's, the rest of it is you have the investment accounts. And it's able to change and it's extremely confusing, trust me. Because I'm trying to understand it, I know. But it's, it's hard, but you know. Give them the money that's good today, and it'll be different tomorrow.
It'll be different tomorrow. Yeah, the amount that's in there will be different tomorrow. It's like your checking account. You write a check today, it's not in there tomorrow. And that's the way that general fund works.
Personnel, not much is going on. We're finishing up the year. We'll have a yearly personnel report for y'all next time as we finish the busy year.
Thank you.
Did I make a motion that we set the monthly grace report? Well, that's the personnel information report.
Lord, excuse me. Hold on a minute. Court to discuss and consider adoption of the 2022 county holiday schedule. All right, as you know, federal government decided to create another holiday, it's Juneteenth. That would be June 17th, which is a Friday of 2022. The question put to you today is, there are different ways to do this. You can observe it and take the day off, you can not observe it and take the day off, you can observe it. And, you know, there's many different options. Do you want to include it as a paid holiday in 2022?
I will note that every county is contributing their own, please, on the topic.
Sure.
254 counties, you can find 254 ways of observing.
There are holidays that are observed and still work.
You just put it back as holiday time, right?
Okay.
So you can take it later?
Uh, let's see, another one that we have. I'm trying to think of an example of one. There are some places that they work Columbus Day or Veterans Day, President's Day, President's Day is a good example. And they don't get a holiday for that at all. It's just observed.
It's not observed, it's worked.
Very valid point. I appreciate that. Right, it's, the federal government did not say this is one of those holidays you will take off that people don't work.
I think we continue to observe the holidays that we have observed in the past, which are several. And we just kind of work on doing the.
That's why I was looking at it. We've got 15 holidays.
We didn't.
Unless we want to give up one and substitute that one, which, I don't see one that. To substitute.
Is it a motion, Gary? Yes. Okay, so I'm sure we're keeping the body, you got it now. No, it's okay. You got it. Hold on a minute. Court to discuss and consider, this is a long meeting on the agenda. I've threatened sent you that we're going to get to double C on the agenda. You all probably will not come to that. Court to discuss and consider setting regular commissioners' court meeting dates for fiscal year 2022. As in the past, it would be the third Tuesday of each month.
I think we'd be the same, and I made a motion that we set a third Tuesday.
Perry, thank you for waiting through all of this. We are now to your portion. Court to discuss and consider request for Perry Westmore and fire court to. And I've been, an antenna on the standpipe that hardly one of us. So, emergency services?
Exactly. Of course. It's been interesting to see how each person works their little corner of the world in this meeting this morning, how it all comes together. So I've got a little corner over here. If you permit me, let me back up to the beginning of the story so that I understand how it's going. About two years ago, I made application through the Office of Emergency Management for the city to, it was through the council of governments for homeland security money that was designated for certain aspects of the public safety communication system. We were very restricted in what we could buy. At the time, I made application for five repeater stations. These would be the, I guess you could call it a base station, but it's really not. The base talks to the repeater, and repeater talks to everybody. So a repeater station, most of them are out in county somewhere, and Billy's never seen and under a radio tower, you never pay attention to him. And they just sit there for 20 years and do their job, and nobody ever knows that they're there. The base station is at the police department, and the mobiles talk, and like walkie talkies talk, and it goes through the repeater. So I made application for five repeaters and received that grant. And I had intended to replace the law enforcement, fire, EMS, emergency management, and the volunteer fire department repeater. Along came COVID. Motor Road did not honor their initial quotes. In fact, Motor Road was closed for several months. When it all came back and we finally started getting things going again, the prices had changed. So out of our hundred something thousand dollar grant that initially bought five repeater stations, we were only able to buy four. So I replaced the law enforcement, fire, EMS, and emergency management with the latest and the greatest state of the art. There were no matching funds. The county didn't have to spend a penny anywhere in the city. This was all paid by the federal government. It would have gone through someone else, and we had not gotten our pieces of pie. And it was still another 14 months before we got those installed. And so we installed those in August. The volunteer fire department did not get a new one, but they had gotten one about nine years ago on grant. So it was the newest one that we had in operation in the county. So what that did for us was we had four totally functional, working, they may have been aged, the radios are like screwdrivers, they may look old, but they still do the same function. So we had four working systems that we took offline. And the new radios came with cabinets, it came with duplexers, which is a fancy term for the device that lets the radio talk and listen at the same time, and very expensive, seven, eight thousand dollars a piece. So basically, we've got four total systems sitting over in my fire department building with no home that could be used. So I came up with the idea of why don't we use them? Our systems are all based generally, we're on three different radio towers. We're on the tower behind the fire department, we're on the county tower. Most people don't know exists, it's at 12th Street and Avenue T. And then my fire department systems are on the tech shop tower. So if a tornado were to come through and take out one, hopefully something's standing. So we're spread out. And that works pretty well for our local radios in and around the county. There are some dead spots, but it does not facilitate our walkie talkie use. You have to be in a generally close location to town to use a walkie talkie. Sometimes in town, they don't even work great. If you're in a building, if you're in a hospital, if you're in Western Texas College, I have no idea why a lorry is the way it is, but you go in a lorry and you made the world turn off. I don't know what it is about that building. But our handles out of the county are pretty useless. We've tried some mobile repeater systems, they sort of work, not too good. But we've got four systems sitting over here that would work if we plugged them in and turned them on. So I've got this mission going. I would like to put something in Hermlyn, something that flew Vanna, and potentially something in Ira. I've talked to South Placed patients, they say there's no reason that that won't work, there's a grant. I've discussed with them how I wanted to program them and to make them work. And we're like, yep, all we got to do is get them licensed, get them installed, put the switch. It won't be cost-free, but this will be the most minimal cost thing we've ever done for a system like this. It's going to cost us anywhere from a thousand to 5,000 per site, depending on what we have to do. If we can find a site that already has an antenna from an old station somebody had, it's kind of put the switch and turn it on, go to town. But I haven't been able to find those sites. So what I'm looking at is the water tower structure at Hermlyn. I'm working on and believe I've secured permission to use the water tower structure to flew Vanna. I have permission from the, it hadn't been approved by a board, but I've talked with the folks with the school system in Ira. I believe they have a structure there that we can use. I'm also trying to get with Texas Connect, because they've got a much taller tower in Ira. And I'm talking with those folks, and I'm going to have an answer from them. But what we need is a location, preferably with electricity and a building and all that in place so that we don't have any rental charges, we don't have any electric bills, we don't have any current fees, where we can slide one of these little cabinets in and plug it in and put the switch. And that will enhance our communications throughout this entire county in ways that we never had before. Really excellent for to be able to do this. But we've got to identify the location for the tower, the Federal Communications Commission. Go through the licensing process that can take up to several months if the radios programmed and installed. So this won't happen overnight. But the first thing we've got to do is tell the FCC we have permission to use this structure for the tower, give the PS coordinates, have that site coordinated, get it licensed. And we'll do that for all three sites. That cost is minimal. The city and county and emergency management are exempt from the FCCs. We just pay the coordinator through the other side. So we will get the site coordinated, we'll get the license in hand, and then it's just a matter of installing an antenna and sliding the radio. And then we'll have to, as we can, get all of our units, patrol cars, trucks, ambulance is already programmed on the radios in order to use the new frequencies. The oldest of these radios is about 22 years, it's the fire department. The law enforcement radio is 20, the EMS was 14. But they should have many years of life left on if they only get it now, like, or something like that. That'll work for a good long time. They're solid, they're dependable, they're built to go, like I say, hide in a dark building and nobody ever, you know. So we need permission to get on the waterworks tower currently and know that we can stay there if the ownership changes or anything down there. And we're seeking that same thing for the other sites through the entities that own those. So that's the bottom line of the request today. And a side note, the exact same grant is coming through again, the homeland security with the council of governments. We are making application for that. Where we, all of the dispatching equipment at the fire department is very old. I'll be honest with you, if I retire, I don't know if they can maintain it. That's just something I've got to take and bone and wire together with anybody else who's going to be able to do that. But in addition to getting the fire department up to date, we're putting law enforcement center on that grant. So if it were to be awarded as we're requesting, we would be able to replace all the dispatching equipment that we have in the other section. That was either touch screens, that, you know, the stations there, the sheriff's office in 911, and everything at the fire department, and in the. and in the emergency operations center. So then we ask for about $250,000. But that's just the bottom, just got rolling on that. We threw our name in the half, and we don't even have a request or proposal yet, so. So all of that to say that the step we've got right now is we've got to get the license going, and we can't do that without the location, and we don't want a location that somebody could pop up here from now and say, they don't know.
Right. I did speak to Corax. Yeah. And they are agreeable, especially since emergency management or fire, they don't mind at all having that agreement in place. So if we were to give license to go forward, they would honor that agreement and et cetera, et cetera. Ms. Summers, did you have a question?
That was my question. You answered it about Corax.
Okay, thank you. Motion and second.
My motion is that we let's give Area West one. There's already placed a standpipe in the waterworks. And that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Judge, I guess that needs to be permission to the county or emergency management or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Specifically, who needs to be named, but the equipment will belong to the county.
Okay. All right.
Change that to the county.
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm about there, even both pockets. Is there anything going on?
Emergency management.
Thanks.
Yes, it's these places.
In town, on the same line.
From emergency management.
And don't use areas and use emergency management.
Okay, court to discuss and consider creation of additional revenues in the form of supplement payment from tax or CBD supplement claims on multiple vehicles due to hill damage.
This was actually not hill damage. This was a, a run into a deer.
Yeah.
So this was a damage for a deer, but it was $3,073.01.
Do we want to do?
All of them?
All of them?
Okay. The next one is the Prisa Provider Relief Carers Act, help relief fund, phase four funding. You receive two different deposits, one for $37,876.31, and the second one for $137,655.74 that we're going to request to be placed into the Texas Class EMS Reserve Fund until we have further information regarding the funding.
Is that in the stack that gave us?
It was calling a new one that I put in her.
Oh, the replace, okay.
And it has.
Because it had an additional one coming in, named it as a class of, that's what I was thinking in. So we wanted to get that at the same time. The next one is ap fuel for the airport, $5,000 on ap fuel receipts. And there would be a request to place that into the airport reserve fund going forward to pass away. And the last one is for golf course. This is the additional revenues over the budgeted revenue for golf course revenue lines. $76,132.22.
That's good. Yeah, I'm gonna pause now. I'm gonna make a motion. So about additional revenues. All in fair.
All right, court to consider request from Jason. EMS for the new funds from EMS education program to Texas class count, let's not bash into the education program.
Sorry, they're in between some of the certified revenues, like on P, R, and T. That's where it's requesting to put the money into the reserve.
Gotcha. I just missed all that. Court to discuss and say placing HRSA provider relief funds into the Texas class EMS reserve fund. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, do that certification, and then consider placing ap fuel funds into the airport reserve fund.
And then to, that's the one that you ordered, right?
Yep. And then let's do those two, and then we'll go to, to T. So.
So additional revenues, just to pay N, O.
And O.
And Q.
Q.
And then S is also an additional revenue. N, O, Q, and S are all additional revenues. P and R, R to place them into the reserve funds, and then T is an additional thing that EMS.
Thank you. I might motion that we replace, make additional revenues and certify open the respective places and preserve it.
Okay. All right, we are in T. Now we'll go to Jason and moving funds from EMS education program to place money back into the education program. Can you explain that?
Sure. So we made, last year, teaching classes and stuff, we made, I think, a little over $100,000. We'd like to pull that money out and put it in the Texas class, and then pull it, with court approval, pull it back out, but back into the education program. Our hopes is to develop a satellite program, the CSCC, for a paramedic program. To become accredited. It's a significant amount of money that really, a college, nobody really has to be accredited. So we're wanting to partner with somebody that's pretty close. The closest one is CSCC, and already have the accreditation, and essentially become satellite based. In order to do that, we have to get a little bit more equipment and training equipment for the paramedic program. We're really good on the NT basic and NT intermediate supplies, but there's some things that we may, we may use to purchase for that partnership. So our fingers are crossed that we can become a satellite based through that program. And that's what that money's going to be moved on for, if allowed. If not, we guys, as we usually do, figure it out, and all of that, and come come down and overcome things. And we'll move on. But we can always move it in there, and if you guys aren't satisfied with what I've had going on, you guys have the blue line, and you can move it back to the put it in general, or whatever you want to call it.
The education.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. So we're trying to move it, move it back to.
Yeah.
Second.
All in fair. Thank you, Jason. First and best one time. Line out a third person for your name.
I want to know what kind of order you put these in.
Well, the original ones, there was an additional ones that were added because of payroll and all of those kind of really ones. Last year, it wanted us to get finished up for the end of the year.
Do these, these include the ones that were already in the bucket? Or they separate?
Not the additional ones that I added. They are separate. So I'll read the ones that are in the packet first, and then I'll read the ones that I've hidden in places.
Okay.
So we're gonna start with county clerk. Election worker, 813, record is a dollar, part-time, 2204, maintenance repair, $146, maintenance agreement, $700. Coming out of election expenses, supplies, record management, election expenses, and election. County attorney, maintenance repair miscellaneous, $90 out of maintenance agreement. Tax office, surety bond, $137, education training, $3739, coming out of office supplies. Maintenance, elevator maintenance, $50 out of maintenance repair miscellaneous. Jail, food line, $6,500 out of doctor medical fees. And health unit, auto expense, $13388 out of education and training. Youth center, utility, $6,000 out of maintenance repair and operating supplies. Youth center programs, $2,000 out of janitorial supplies and office supplies. Use their general ability insurance, $4,000 out of partner supplies. Parks department, parks tires, $960 out of auto expense. Parks department equipment, $1,000 to $5,000, $4,000 out of contract labor. Extension service, postage, $30 out of A and R with travel. Extension service, fuel oil, $40, and agent due dues, $40 out of A and R travel. Precinct two, tires, tenant two, $3,000, capital outlay, $30,476. Out of part-time machine hire, load material construction, operating supplies, safety and training. Precinct four, maintenance and repair, $1,500, as far as materials, $1,500. Golf course, ground supplies, $1,292.77, fuel, oil, and grease, out of office supplies, tires and change, janitorial supplies, operating supplies, other equipment, maintenance repair, and food concession. Airport, capital, over $5,000. It was, they had gone along more. We'd already done budget amendment, and there was an additional fee of $99.44 that needed to cover that additional amount. So that's a reason. EMS, office supplies, 300, or 30, utilities, 600, managed repair miscellaneous, $3,000, operating supplies, $1,000, out of safety training, vehicle expense, and EMS education program and travel. Those are, that was the line I was finishing. I'm gonna go ahead and do the, these budget amendments that are right behind it.
Good.
And then I'm going to read all those other ones. There's budgeting for district court, and these are, this for the court of county decreeing, which was $62,763.98. The HAVA fund is county clerk education, and this was due to the carers act, and changes, $2,000. Cost of irrigation lines, $8,469.3, that's not worth, sorry. And we there was donations that were specifically taken back for that, and so that money has come from the donation cost, $8,469.3. Country club, golf course, and to the country club renovation improvement, this is $4,200 to remove the asbestos for the demolition of the building that I'll have voted on previously. So part of the funds that we certified earlier for excess revenue over what we measured, it goes to cover that cost. EMS capital, this is 2020's record caught, $14,850. And that one, let's go down. The next.
Let me know when you're done with this.
Countywide payroll lines, IP department head, $6,500, juvenile provision. Can you just read the totals?
Sure.
Okay. The totals in countywide payroll lines, $20,102 out of panic, other general payroll lines. This is the general payroll lines, countywide, it's $31,886.63 from other general payroll lines. And then this one is the regular payroll for all the regular hourly ones, $129,198.58. And that is also from other payrolls transferring into other parallels. There are no budget amendments to payroll related lines. Part-time payroll lines, $24,276.58. Social security is $5,688.12. Retirement, $5,505.41, also from another retirement line. And then the Suda is $3,979.48-ish, I believe it's.
What's Jesus?
Yeah, 4K is $2,979.68, and it just comes from other Suda lines from this county. Medical insurance was $82,385.83, again, from other end of the line, throughout the county. There was no needed budgeting lines on any of the payroll related expenses at any of the departments across the board. So non-partemental is next. Postage, $23,469, safety media, $2,270.2, drug screen, $145.80, fuel and oil, $47,017.8. That is because now we pay all the fuel and oil out of non-partemental instead of each separate department. Legal service, $2,387. Other expense went up this year, was $9,838.47, but keeping expense, $1,042.85. Computer maintenance, $4,013.8. All department software, $20,294.21. Delta electric wiring system, $6,442. Property insurance, $8,966. Auto insurance, $1473. Both of those are increases. This year, but they will increase more next year, but to be told, held image. Row brush truck, $29,881.16. Those total up to $60,678.79. Coming out of contingencies, copier supplies, communications, utilities, postage meter leases, public officials, insurance, and appraisal district fees. Then there was just a few small lines here and there that we needed to clean up for the end. So district other equipment, $748.48, out of office supplies. JP one, education and training, $47.28, out of her office supplies. JP two, she had an additional autopsy, $600 out of her office supplies. Share, the jail and share department, we had additional food expense, $1,072.37. The jail utilities, $22,217.9. Clothing allowance, $1,229.7, communications, $4,774.6, and share department, which is also more utilities. $22,377.88, out of just doctor medical fees and travel expense, totaling $50,566.87. Safety unit, travel allowance, $600, and utilities, $236, that is for training. Golf course, $1574, janitorial supplies, $3731, operating and miscellaneous, $21, out of food concessions. Hermlyn Water Works, work is comp, $99.44, and additional training, $250, out of cell phone allowance, $349.44. Airport, there was $32 education and training, out of operating supplies. EMS contract labor, $475, out of travel. And then to last two budget amendments, this is the line expense. We get the money, we pay it out, we get it back. It's just a revolving deal for $9,961.78. And then workers management preservation, or maintenance agreement, $1177.6, and equipment, $1,025,004.16. Those, that money can only be used for that type of stuff.
I thought you said something. You said you don't do pennies?
Yeah.
I needed zeros.
I thought it was 16 cents, but I wrote.
And first budget, okay.
First, I got a question. Is there a lot, two or three more?
Yes.
Good.
That was second.
All right. Just a second. All in fair.
Tables, $934,102.26.
I can motion wave through the table.
Okay. All in fair. All right, we will reset and.
I have a question.
After.
We signed your line.
I will catch up to y'all eventually.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought there were more line item transfers to go. She's, you did not finish the line item transfer at all.
She did. She did one set, and then she did another set. The set that was in the packet, she said that she finished those, and then she went on to the next set.
What, what was involved with precinct two?
She raised, well, what precinct two?
Remember what it was on there?
It was, it was for the purchase of a pickup, it's like, for a used vehicle.
For a used vehicle?
Yes.
Hey, good. That one for the thought was part of that annual that was tricky.
Okay.
That was out of access class.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure that was noted. It's already been accounted for.
Right.
But true budgeting, and they're coming out of pick this one.
Okay.
And then we need to pull in 28 of those. 28, maybe don't forget the, except for decline.
Except for decline what? I'm sorry.
The, uh, first of them.
Okay.
On the 28.
Okay. Could you remind me in an email?
Yes.
The 28 birthday.
Yeah. We, we did have a meeting next week for.
We'll do it that year next year. Got 90 days. So, but you can get that. We have it next year.
I'm not moving in this.
Well, I know. Thank you.
Your opinion manager does that. Thank you, everyone. We are now in reset. Are y'all? I'm still stuck in the class.
I know, I do. Oh, well, you're gonna text me.
I know, I know. This was like this.
Y'all have any questions?
Jason, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Excuse me. You are?
Hello.
Are you gonna be the one to go? Have the road yet tomorrow?
No, that's gonna be our instructor manager and subcontractors are gonna be.